Welcome, everyone. I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the October 7th regular scheduled Board of County Commissioner meeting to order. If you would, I've asked Commissioner Perkins to lead us in the prayer, and then one of our 4-H members, Ms. Riley, is gonna lead us in the pledge. So if y'all would please stand.
Let us pray. God, our Father in heaven, lo, we come at this opportunity time to God. Rend the thanks unto you, all that you have done and doing for us, dear God. We thank you for blessing this county, God. We thank you, dear God, for blessing our leadership. And, God, we ask, dear God, that your Spirit come in, oh, God. Look on these, your people, dear God, that is in this room tonight, dear God, your concerned citizens, God. Look on them in the mighty way. Bless their homes, dear God, and we thank you, dear God, for the safe travels here. And pray, God, that you bless them in their travel away, back to their destination. We ask, dear Father, God, be with this board, dear God. Help us to make the right decision, God. Let your Spirit, God, guide our minds, our hearts, dear God, that we make the right decision for this community, for our town, for our county. And, God, we pray, dear God, for those who watch us, dear God. We pray, God, that you would bring things to order, dear God, for the coming good of the people of this United States. We pray, God, that you tend to bless our leadership there, oh, God, in the name of Jesus, dear God. Let them remember, dear God, it's we, the people, that have come, dear God. Look, watch your people. And, God, we'll give you the praise and the glory, for in Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all. Thank you, Ms. Riley. Usually it's one of us ugly guys up here saying the pledge, so you're a sigh of relief. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes, and we have from the September 16th regular scheduled board meeting, the September 22nd special call meeting, and the September 22nd final budget hearing. Any questions, comments, concerns, approvals, additions to those minutes? Or do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. The next item on the agenda is public concerns and comments. I'm gonna jump down. We have three proclamations and presentations, and there's a good many people here for that. So I'm gonna jump down and do that first before, because I know I have a lot of public comments, so I don't know if these young 4-Hers have bedtimes or not, so that we're not stuck here forever. I'm gonna put you kids up front. Um, uh, yeah. Well, I got a bedtime too, but I don't hardly ever make it on Tuesday night, first and third Tuesdays. Anyway, so we're gonna skip down and do our presentations and proclamations. So item number two, unless y'all want me to get somebody else to go first. Are y'all nervous? All right, item number two. Presentation of resolution proclaiming October 4th through 11th, 2025 as National 4-H Week. Ms. Katie Jones, our extension agent, and then I believe you have one of your young ones here is gonna read the proclamation when you get to it.
Do you have a copy of it?
I have it, yes, ma'am.
Do you have the copy?
Yes.
Sorry.
There you go. So if you wanna tell us a little bit about the proclamation, then you're gonna have one of them read it, I think.
Yes, I am. So every year, National 4-H Week celebrates the impact that 4-H has on youth across the country. 4-H is the largest youth organization in the world, because we have 4-H programs in places like Japan. And so we're just here today celebrating what we're celebrating all week, but also sharing with you the message of 4-H. You know, we serve over 1,500 youth in Swanee County every single year. The individuals that I brought with me tonight are Swanee County 4-H Council, and so they're serving in leadership roles. At the county level, they represent members of 13 different clubs. And so I'm gonna introduce you to Ryan Keeler. Ryan is our county council chaplain, and he's gonna read the proclamation for you.
All right, welcome, Mr. Keeler. You might need to pull, there you go.
Whereas this year's National 4-H Week theme, Beyond Ready, reminds us that 4-H is building a ready generation in a world of change and equips young people with skills for the future while meeting them where they are today. Whereas 4-H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting 6 million youth across the country. And whereas 4-H programs are delivered by the Cooperative Extension System, a community more than 100 public land-grant colleges and universities across the nation that provides experiences for young people to learn by doing. Whereas 4-H in every city and county in the United States helps 6 million youth become engaged, successful, and independent. And whereas 4-H connects youth, people, and adults to their communities, preparing them for work and life through experimental and inquiry-based learning while providing emerging research for positive youth development. And whereas expanding from its strong agriculture roots, 4-H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults. And whereas supporting future leaders in science, agriculture, and community leadership is an important imperative for U.S. Department of Agriculture, National Institute of Food and Agriculture, 4-H program. And now, therefore, I, Ryan Keeler, do hereby proclaim October 5, 11, 25 as National 4-H Week throughout Swanee County, and encourage all our citizens to recognize 4-H for the significant, for the significant impact it has made and continues to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. And witness whereof I have here unto set my hands on this October 7th, 2025.
Very good, Mr. Keeler. I like it, buddy. I'll trade your seats.
I feel psyched, Chairman. I think he's after you.
Yeah, you're doing a fine job there.
So each of our youth, I kinda told them ahead of time they were gonna get a chance to speak, and so each of them has something that they wanna share with you about their 4-H experience.
Absolutely.
And so I'm gonna let Riley lead off, and then I'm just gonna keep kicking them up here, and they can tell you their name when they get up here.
All right.
Good evening, Commissioners. On behalf of the county council, I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Riley Floyd, and I am proud to be serving as Swanee 4-H County Council's president. 4-H is more than just a youth program. It's a place where young people can grow into leaders, learn lifelong skills, and build meaningful connections with their peers. I can confidently say that this organization is the reason I'm speaking before you tonight. In Swanee County, 4-H is constantly making a difference, not in just the lives of our youth, but in the entire community. Thanks to your continued support, our organization is able to make opportunities that help local youth grow in confidence and capability. Thank you again for your time and your support of 4-H, of Swanee County 4-H. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jerry Watkins. I'm a member of the McCalpin Just Can 4-H Group. 4-H has possibility impacted my life by allowing me to take part in a group of kids that accept me. 4-H builds confidence and team-building skills. I appreciate, I appreciate your generous support of the 4-H programs. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Ella Eves, and I am one of the many club presidents. I would like to thank the county commissioners for their support of the Swanee County 4-H. Without 4-H, I would not know how to be a great leader. 4-H has also helped me prepare for a career in veterinary medicine, and I would like to thank you for your continued support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Levi Starling, and I live on a fifth-generation farm where my family grows cattle, hay, and other row crops. As a 4-Her, I've learned to make the best better in everything I do. In addition, I've learned leadership and public speaking skills to be a better voice for agriculture in our schools and our community, community. I wanna thank you, county commissioners, for all your support through our 4-H journey. Thank you.
4-H means to me, 4-H isn't just about waiting or going to competitions. It's about having friends and having fun. I don't know if y'all know, but there is a hay bale contest coming up, and I don't know if y'all have ever drove by a Coliseum, but there's hay bales decorated, and they're cute this year. There's also other things besides, let's see, we have the shoebox parade, poultry judging, chick chain, Madison, Live Oak Chick Chain, county events, and if you get blue ribbon for county events, you get to move on to districts if you want to. The holiday bake-off is coming up in December.
Wow.
It's, as we normally have a chili cook-off, we have Share the Fun, which is a talent show. We also have
Is this locked?
Um, an ugly sweater contest. And then also, there is, like you, like there's, kids will come from all different clubs, and they will bake something. There are a bunch of categories. There's cakes, candies, specialty desserts, gingerbread houses, and there's candies. And then the cloverbuds, of course, get to participate if they want to. They don't get judged, but they get a little gold spoon for participation, and encourages them to keep doing it. And when they get to a junior, they start getting judged for a junior to a senior, and then that's it.
All right.
I'm Ryan Keeler. I'm our, I'm our Swanee County's 4-H, I'm our county council. I'm currently the chaplain for our county council. And basically, what 4-H means to me, 4-H has helped me come into a better leader and has taught me how to make the best better with my public speaking and all that. I just wanna thank every single one of you county commissioners for your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're very blessed, because we have a county extension director, Ms. Carolyn Saf, who's with us as well tonight, that believes in what we're doing with our youth, and we appreciate everything that you guys do for you. What Avery didn't say was, please feel free to come, drop by and join us for any of those activities. The kids love to see our community leaders there as well. Thank you so much for all that you guys do to support our program. We appreciate it. I've been to conferences and conventions across the country, and I can honestly say that Swanee County provides far and above more than anyone, any of the other counties around us for their 4-H program, but also across the state, we have, we have resources that other counties don't get, and it's because you guys believe in what we're doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Katie.
And we'd like to picture if we have time.
Okay. Well, first thing I have to do is, this requires the chairman's signature, so I have to ask if I have a motion to approve the proclamation.
So move.
Have a motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Y'all wanna picture? I'm gonna do it now. Hey, if y'all wanna leave, y'all feel free to leave. We're gonna be here for another hour and a half or two.
Thank you, y'all.
Thank y'all for coming. Y'all did a great job.
Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Keeler, in a few years, you can come back and take my seat, Ryan.
Uh-huh.
I think he tried to tonight, but I wasn't gonna stop him.
He went right on.
Yeah, I like it, I like it.
I like it.
Yeah. Um, my apologies, y'all, for skipping around on that. I just wanted to get those young folks up and out of here, 'cause I'm sure they got school tomorrow. Um, yeah, let's finish the presentations and, well, yeah, we'll finish the presentation and proclamations, then we'll go back to public concern and comment. So item number three is a presentation of resolution proclaiming October 19th through the 25th, 2025 as Friends of the Library Week. Ms. Betty, there she is, Ms. Betty Lawrence, our Director of Libraries.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, welcome.
Thank you. Those kids are, are really, they're great. It takes a lot of nerve to get up and speak the way they did, and they did a terrific job.
Great training.
So I'm here to acknowledge our Friends of the Library. Each year, we designate a week to just recognize our Friends of the Libraries, because they give so much support to our libraries, which in turn supports our citizens. Before I get started, I want to recognize some of my friends here in the audience. Thank you so much for coming to be with us, especially having worked on preparing for the book sale all day today. So the Friends of the Library support us with funding for programs, some things we can't purchase with county funds, such as food and our meals for some of our programs, but we feel it's important to have it. That's what our community likes coming to enjoy when we have our programs. So the Friends of the Library support the food and drinks for all of our programs, and that's year-round. And so I want to acknowledge that. And also, this past year, they made a fairly large purchase for the library. We call them library pods, and basically what they are are solutions for small rooms that you can have set up in your library without interfering with the structure itself. And so our Friends, this past year, donated funding for that pod in honor of one of our past presidents, and it's used for tutoring and other programs or other sessions when tutoring is not going on. So that's a big deal, and we really appreciate it. So what I'd like to do is either have the chair or myself read a proclamation.
It won't hurt my feelings if you read it. I got one to read after you.
Okay. All right. So with that being said, I'd like to read the proclamation and ask the board to, to accept it, please. Whereas Swanee County Friends of the Library raises money that enables the Swanee River Regional Library System to move from good to great, providing the resources for additional programming, much-needed equipment, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. Whereas the work of the Friends highlight on an ongoing basis the fact that our library is the cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services to all ages, including access to print and electronic materials, along with expert assistance in research, readers advisory, and children's services. Whereas the Friends' gift of their time and commitment to the library sets an example for all in how volunteerism leads to provide civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners proclaims October 19th through the 25th, 2025 as Friends of the Libraries Week in Swanee County, and urges everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to make our library and community so much better.
Very good. Is there anything you wanna add to that for our I.C.'s folks?
I just wanna let you know that we do have the book sale going on next week, this week.
It starts Thursday.
And I also have applications for anybody that want to join the Friends of the Library, so they'll be out in the foyer. I encourage you to do it. It helps us so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. Y'all have any questions for Ms. Betty, or do I have a motion to approve the proposed resolution? I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Perkins, a second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Betty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Betty. We appreciate all you do and the Friends of the Library for what they do. Item, item number four is a presentation of resolution declaring October 14th Charlie Kirk's birthday as Charlie Kirk Day. This is something that, that I had suggested that we do. Many counties across the country are doing this as well, and I felt like if not all, most of our citizens would be on board with this. But nonetheless, it is a, it is a resolution, so we will need board approval of it, but I'm gonna read here. Like most Americans, I was angered, hurt, and confused when Charlie Kirk was assassinated on September 10th of 2025. I join most Americans in valuing the ideals Charlie Kirk represented, that engaging in civic debate is a core part of the American identity, and all people should celebrate his example regardless of political affiliation. I also condemn all political violence, especially where it is used to silence a prominent voice of any political ideology. As I know most, if not all, of Swanee County shares my values on Charlie Kirk and his example, American ideals, and the need to condemn political violence. I am proposing the attached resolution declaring October 14th Charlie Kirk's birthday Charlie Kirk Day, to encourage reflection on how important free speech and civic debate is to our society. So I'll read the resolution really quickly. Ms. Betty, this is why I said you wouldn't hurt my feelings if you read. I think mine's longer. Whereas Charles Charlie Kirk was born October 14th, 1993, and whereas at the age of 18, Charlie Kirk founded Turning Point USA, an organization with the mission to identify, educate, train, and organize students to promote the principles of fiscal responsibility, free markets, and limited government. And whereas Charlie Kirk became a prominent conservative voice in American politics by engaging in respectful civil discourse across college campuses and media platforms. And whereas Charlie Kirk's engagement and debates on college campuses epitomize the values represented by the First Amendment and freedom of speech. And whereas Charlie Kirk was a devout Christian, and whereas Charlie Kirk was a dedicated husband to his wife Erica Kirk and loving father to his two children. And whereas Charlie Kirk was assassinated on September 10th, 2025 while engaging in civic discourse at Utah Valley University. And whereas acts of political violence are to be unequivocally and universally condemned regardless of party, ideology, race, or religion, as political violence undermines our republic and threatens to chill speech, which is central to our American identity. And whereas the assassination of Charlie Kirk should not divide our society, but instead serve as a reflection point where all persons stand united and committed to the ideals personified by Charlie Kirk, the First Amendment, and our Constitution. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Swanee County, Florida, that the assassination of Charlie Kirk is condemned. Be it further resolved that all acts of political violence are condemned. Be it further resolved that Swanee County extends its condolences and sympathies to Charlie Kirk's family, including his wife Erica and their two young children. Be it further resolved that Swanee County values the example set by Charlie Kirk, that frank civil debate is a core principle of the First Amendment and the United States Constitution. Be it further resolved that October 14th, 2025 is hereby declared Charlie Kirk Day, and all persons are encouraged to recommit themselves to valuing and encouraging frank, open debate, and expression. Citizens are further encouraged to reflect on the challenge posed by Charlie Kirk and his example, which is to not only tolerate, but civically engage with the expression of views and ideas that may differ from their own or a group they belong to. And it goes on to say, passed and duly adopted in regular session with a quorum present and voting by the Board of County Commissioners this seventh day of October, 2025. Any, any questions, comments, concerns, or do I have a motion to approve the proposed resolution, Charlie Kirk Day?
So move.
I have a motion by Commissioner White, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, guys. Back to public concerns and comments. I'm just jumping backwards. So I have some comment cards here. I have a whole bunch on one specific topic, but I have one that is not, and that's Mr. Mr. Fontana, name and address for the record when you get there, please, sir. C. Fontana, 21181144th Street, Live Oak, Florida. And I'm just here to announce, a week from Saturday, American Patriots is gonna have a speaker. I gave out the flowers to most people here. It's gonna be Dr. Paul Byrne, and he's gonna be speaking on the difference between brain death and actual death. So a lot of people, even myself, I didn't know there was much of a controversy here, but he's had some personal experience where he's brought people back from "brain death", quote-unquote. So there needs to be, you talked about public debate and discussion. This, this one needs some public debate and discussion. So, and with the, kind of the tradition of American Patriots of North Florida, we're a forum for local speakers and national speakers, national speaker issues like this. And so come on out on Saturdays. And also, I'm gonna throw out there, not to take away from our group at all, but we are currently looking for another venue Saturday evening. If your church would like to host Dr. Paul Byrne, come, come and see me, 'cause he wants to, he wants to get this out as much as he can. If you wanna get this message to your people in your, your church, you know, go ahead and talk to me about it, and we'll, we'll see what we can do. We'll get him there. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fontana. So I think I have 12 or 13 on my count in regards to the spring zone. So there's a bunch of you guys here that I don't recognize, so I'm gonna assume y'all don't come very often. It's three minutes per person, and what I would say to you guys, we're welcome to listen to every single one of you for your three minutes, but if you hear someone that's saying the same thing, you know, you're welcome to come up and say the same thing as well. But in sake of time, I would ask you to just be mindful of that. So these are in no particular order. I'll just call them off, and as I call you, call, call them off, you are to come to the podium and state your name and address for the clerk of the court who keeps a record. Mr., Mr., what's his name? Mr. Klepper, you wanna speak now? I think, I didn't mean to skip over you.
Oh, thank you.
You usually come up when I say, is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak? You're usually a sprinter. So, Mr. John S. Quarterman? Welcome, sir.
Howdy.
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record when you get to the podium, please, sir.
How are you, sir?
How you doing?
Good.
I haven't been here in several years, so why, most of you don't recognize me. I'm John S. Quarterman, P.O. Box 88 Hayhira, Georgia. So why am I here in Florida? 'Cause I'm the Swanee River Keeper, concerned with trying to keep waters clean in the entire 10,000 miles of the Swanee River Basin, back and forth, kinda schizophrenic, Georgia, Florida. Okay, so about the springs protection zone, I've paddled through that area, all the way from the head spring down onto the Santa Fe River. And, you know, it's great when you're in park. Once you get below that, there's boats everywhere. And there's also still people swimming and tubing. And once, of course, once you get onto the Santa Fe, last time I did this was in March, then the power boats are going full blast, which if you're in a kayak, just, you know, turn 45 degrees, try not to get swamped. But on the itch atutney, if they're doing that, I see that as a bit of a problem. But on the Ichiutuckene, if they're doing that, I see that as a bit of a problem for several reasons. One, obviously, I'm concerned about the turtles and the erosion of the banks. And in addition, all those people in the water, in swimming and tubing and in small craft, it's a safety issue as well. So for all these reasons, I would recommend that y'all support the Lower Ichiutuckene Springs Exclusion Zone, and in particular, a no-wake zone would probably solve most of this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quarterman. And I kind of got ahead of myself, you guys. Way to go there, Mr. Morrison. Hey, there's, so what I would tell you guys is under item number, there he is again. There's an item on the agenda, item number 14, which is discussed with possible board action, the Springs Protection Zone on the Ichiutuckene River, which has a presentation by Mr. Alden Rosner, Parks and Rec Director. So if you're here to speak on the Springs, I'll probably ask you at that, when we get to item number 14 under general business, we also ask, is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on this agenda item that's on general business? I probably should have did that earlier, so if y'all would, if you're here to speak on the Springs, let's just hold y'all until we get to item number 14, because that is an agenda item for us to talk. So you will get an opportunity to talk under item 14. But if you're here, and you're welcome to come back up. I didn't, it just dawned on me, man, we got an agenda item. They're going to come back up and say, dawg, I'm here for that item. So just hold your thoughts, hold your comments, and when we get to item 14, we'll say, is anybody from the public wishing to speak? And then I'll go through this list, if that's all right with y'all.
I'll be happy to come back up.
Because if not, we're going to be jumping around on topics.
And say what I said before.
Yes, that'll be fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And just sort of unrelated to item number 14, mentioning Mr. John's name, I do want everyone here in the public to know, he is a huge help when it comes to.
Valdosta.
Valdosta, yes, and I appreciate it.
I've seen his name in videos and posts. Yes, sir.
All right.
So now, is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak on anything that is not related to item 14? My old faithful friend, Mr. Moses Clepper. Address, please, sir.
14581102, Pad, Live Oak. I was pleased to read in the agenda packet about Charlie Kirk Day. I wrote something up here, and I will just read what I wrote. "We would like to commend the chairman for proposing the declaration on October 14th as Charlie Kirk's Day. Although there have been many lies told about the man, anyone who has followed him or listened to what he has said, and not only what was misquoted and taken out of context, would certainly come to the conclusion that he was doing God's work and was leading the effort to reverse the indoctrination of our children, young people, and many adults as well. Those of you who question his intentions, please go online and listen to any and many of his discussions and civil debates." Item, so I had four and eight that I was going to speak to on the consent. On number eight, "Due to the lack of transparency and questionable behaviors of the sheriff, we object to any more taxpayer funds being released or contributed to the Sheriff's Department until it is proven that there has not been any misappropriations or embezzlement of the taxpayers' resources." And also, had several ask me to ask about the, well, about the audit, yeah, where are we at with the audit?
When we get to Mr. Morrison, Mr. Morrison's going to have a brief update for us on that audit. He's the point man for the audit folks.
Thank you. Also, when you read the Charlie Kirk thing, I really enjoyed it coming out of your mouth about civil discourse and the minority opinion, I don't think you use that word, but it's important. And now I know you know how important it is, so I enjoyed that. Since, another thing, out of the consent, since y'all give James and Robin Cornet with the Music Park over $60,000 a year of taxpayers' monies, we move this board to stipulate a condition requiring them to offer at least a 50% discount at the Swanee Music Park for all those who pay homestead property taxes in Swanee County, which y'all had considered that. Regrettably, and once again, this part, gee, ain't you like, me sending our thoughts, concerns, and suggestions to the board prior to the previous meeting in hopes of y'all using the information to realize where the budgets could be cut and the millage rate reduced, wound up with, we, the people of North Central Florida, wound up with some of those who we put our trust in, using the provided information to prepare an excuse why the board is willing to increase property taxes by not substantially reducing the millage rate. We pointed out areas of concern and provided some solutions, but was pushed back with justifications, all the while ignoring the bloated and padded budgets. And I found out just before this meeting that there's actually millions of dollars in budget surpluses that I wouldn't, I'll come up with a number, I know, and I won't be 100% accurate, but next meeting I'll come up with a number, or I may just send that to y'all. Anybody, what happened in the supervisor elections office where y'all agreed to hire the replacement personnel many months ago, and yet the individual who was supposed to be retiring is still there and is budgeted for? That's a concern. The outgoing administration increased the burden on the taxpayers by over $1 million in salary increases and benefits in less than three years. We need commissioners, administrators, and department heads to do more than find creative ways of spending taxpayers' funds. We need fiscally conservative, God-fearing, moral individuals in those key positions, not self-serving frivolous spending, and I'm going to leave the last word out. At the last meeting, the chairman did his best to discredit the fact that they were raising the taxpayers' burden by $1.3 million at the approved 8.8 millage rate. He misquoted me, saying that over the last 10 years, the property taxes have increased approximately $10 million, which in fact, they have increased approximately $10 million over the last six years, as I stated, not 10 years. Quite a difference. If this board is, if this board truly was fiscally conservative, y'all would require more proof of where the taxpayers' dollars are being spent, instead of just approving bloated and padded budgets with minimal oversight. Again, to be clear, when y'all voted to approve the 8.8 millage rate, y'all in fact knowingly increased our taxes $1.3 million for the coming year. With the following question, I ask for a response from either of you commissioners, including my commissioner, Commissioner Hale. The question is a yes or no answer, and if it's a no answer, please explain. Has a policy been written to prevent exempt-salaried employees from abusing the taxpayers' resources by charging overtime? Anybody willing to answer that?
Anybody willing to answer that? There's no rule says we have to engage you in conversation, but I appreciate your comments. Thank you, sir. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Welcome, sir. Name and address for the record. Please try to keep it to three minutes.
I can do that.
Thank you.
Want to just come up here? Excuse me, Bo Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. Last meeting, I talked to my commissioner about Wiggins Road and the weed problem along the sides of the road. They've been out, and I think it's a wise use of taxpayer dollars. They come out and they have the sides of that road clear, you can see around the curves now, you're not going to run into anybody. And they did a heck of a job, and I just wanted to stand up and thank you for it, and thank Leo, because he contacted the road department. But they came out and did a heck of a job. And, one other thing, you know, folks sitting there, these young'uns, we're in good shape, folks.
Yes, sir.
I would agree.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Hancock. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will close public comment. We are moving on to the consent agenda. Item number 10 is being pulled for clarification only, so that leaves items five through nine and 11 and 12. Any questions, comments, concerns, or do I have a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale, second by, who was that? Second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item number 10, authorization to transfer collected teen court assessment funds equally to the Florida Sheriff's Youth Ranches and Police Athletic League, Swanee County Chapter of the Police Athletic League. Commissioner Perkins had asked me to pull this, he had a question for Mr. Baker, I mentioned it to Mr. Baker before the meeting, just for clarification personally, I think Mr. Perkins has a couple of questions for you, or one, I don't know. Mr. Perkins.
Just to clarify, how the funding is going to be divided?
The funding would be equally divided between the two. It's the Sheriff's, it's the Florida Sheriff's Youth Ranches and also, or the Boys Ranch, and then it's the other part would go to the POW program. It's where this is the monies that I had asked y'all about if we could, because we no longer have that teen court program. And it's where that originally the state had advised us to put it into the facility fund, because that's where it would go. Whenever it turns out that there's two other teen, teen court program monies, it's where that they thought we were talking about the other program instead of the $3. And so whenever that they brought it back to us, or actually, our finance staff couldn't tie the monies back to statute, and so it's where we asked the state again, and it's where we got clarification, and it's where that, because we no longer have the teen court program, it's the monies have to be used on a teen diversion programs. We have two of those in our county, and we thought it'd be, it would be the recommendation of our office to split it evenly between the Florida Sheriff's Youth Ranches and the POW program. It's the monies had not been expended already underneath that facilities fund, it's simply a ledger correction, is what it is, so.
Would that be sent in increments, or would it be given as one lump sum to those?
It'd be given as one lump sum, but it's where that, because some of those, with those, with those fees, some of those, like if someone goes away to prison and stuff, it's where those fees were assessed years ago, but yet it may be another 10 years whenever someone gets out of prison and gets a job before that there's, before those monies are recognized. And so because they were assessed underneath that program, it's where there could be some monies, it won't be a lot, I don't anticipate, but those would also be split 50/50 between those two, if that's the way the board.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Mr. Baker, so if I read this right, there's almost 21,000?
Correct.
So just going to divide that in half, and one to the Florida Sheriff's and the other one to the Police Athletic?
Correct.
Okay.
It's because it does have to be used for a teen diversion program, because that's the way, that's the purpose it was established for in statute.
Okay.
Thank you for your point.
And Adam may be able to give you a lot better clarification than what I just said, because he's a lot better speaker than I am. I was hoping you were going to keep some of these kids behind, so I could get them to give this fee for them.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. I don't know if you are or not, Commissioner Perkins, are you on the Police Athletic League board?
Yes, sir.
You might want to redact yourself, since he's on that board, money's being given to him, just looking out for you.
Okay.
Any other questions for item number 10, or do I have a motion to remove? You're redacting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approves unanimously, well, four to zero, with Commissioner Perkins redacting because he sits on the Police Athletic League board. I wasn't trying to tell you what to do, I was just looking at.
You're right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is constitutional officers. Are there any constitutional officers present wishing to speak? Next item, staff, are there any staff members? Welcome, chief.
Good evening. Just real quick, I just wanted to let the board know and the citizens know that in November, Swanee County Fire Rescue will be getting, will be getting our review through the ISO process, and basically it's a thorough examination of what Swanee County Fire Rescue has done over the last five years. When we get that, they look at dispatch, they look at fire response, they look at water supply, things like that. When we get that results back in, I'll, going to be doing a presentation for the board and for the public, so they can see where we stand compared to everybody else, so.
How often is that review done?
So every five years. So we had in 2014, 2019, and they're actually running late, so we were supposed to have it about six months ago, so.
Fair enough.
Just wanted to let everybody know.
We'll look forward to it.
Soon as I have those grades, I'll let, I'll give a presentation.
I'd love for my homeowner's insurance to go down. Staff, are there any other staff members present wishing to speak? Seeing none, commissioner items, are there any, Commissioner Mobley has one.
I have one too.
And Commissioner.
An update on the cattle barn or the show barn? I went to a biser meeting this morning with staff, and I got attacked. Everyone over there, show barn is, and what's the deal with it?
Do you want me to, Mr. Rosner, or me? I'll go. So we have like 100% plans finished, I think we're working on, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Rosner, but we're working with the final site with water management on a retention area, and I think that's the holdup right now, trying to shrink that down and move it, you know, kind of out of the area, because we've got a lot of area there for the campground, trying to shrink up that footprint. But we're close to getting ready to go out to bid.
Did the impervious service increase to change just on water retention?
A little bit.
Significantly?
No, not significantly, but they have rules that we're trying to jump through the hoops, and they're working with us.
All right, just asking a question, didn't say they weren't.
I know, but.
Commissioner Hale, believe you have one?
Actually, I had mentioned this to the sheriff before the meeting started, I don't know if you guys, but I've been getting questions about the cameras, roadway cameras, and I just want to, I know that y'all put something out on the Facebook or something, I was told, but you should just let the public know what that's about, please, sir.
Yeah, they're called flock cameras. You're not, I mean, obviously, we're not the only one that has them, actually, they're throughout the state of Florida and throughout the United States. And the reason, and the reason that we got them was to solve crimes. You know, it's a very useful tool. I know there's some worries about there being Big Brother and watching, and you know, where you come, where you go, and so forth. It's not that, it's, okay, I mean, easy thing to give you an example, okay? And we've used it successfully several times. For example, we had a vandalism at church on River Road, and on the church, they had a video camera or a camera that took a picture of the truck. Well, you see a good clear picture of the truck, but you couldn't see the tag number at all, but it was a little blue Ford Ranger with an off-color door on the side. So we put that input in that flock camera, and when it went by the camera, we got the tag number, and we was able to identify him and put him in jail for vandalism of the church. That's just one example. Another example was when, you know, when my deputy got shot, you know, the guy in Gaston County that committed murder over there, we was able to follow him from Gaston County to Swanee County there. Another example was, we, this is still an active investigation, is where we had a trailer with a side-by-side stolen from it, stolen on it, and like I say, once we're a member of the flock cameras, you know, then we network with all other counties of the state of Florida and throughout the United States. So we was able to identify the suspect and the vehicle, and follow away to St. John's County, and like I say, we hadn't put him in jail yet, but due to these cameras, we were able to identify him. Another thing that, you know, we use it for is missing persons, so what we do is we input information in there, say, say you're Mr. Hale, he's got Alzheimer's and he's went off, we can't find him, well, you know where he's driving, his tag number, so we'll put that in the system, and then once you pass a flock camera, then it'll come back, you know, hey, this is where he's at, you know. He could be in California, and it would come back, say, he's out in California. So that's why we got it, and so far, and there's actually some of them are not even online yet, so just the ones that's online have been successful in finding missing persons and solving crimes, and that's our use for it. It doesn't, it doesn't take facial recognition, within 30 days, it deletes the information off the stuff, and you know, it just, you know, it just reboots up and so forth. So it's not invasion of privacy, or, you know, following people and trying to find out where they come and go, it's not, it is, whatever we input in there is what we get back out. So it's basically just like a toll booth camera, it just takes a picture of the vehicle, the color, and make and model, and the tag number, and it's just a very useful tool for us, and so. for us, and so far it's been very successful for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Hale, Sheriff. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Perkins?
Sure. I was going the other day over to Millerburg, and they're going through Oncomers, lights flashing, each time I go underneath the FDOT apparatus, something that go up and it flashes, so that's, but who monitors those things? How are they being monitored?
The flock cameras?
Yes.
Well, it's, it's, the different agencies monitoring them. So just like I was saying, just like with, example, Mr. Hale, you know, if something come back, then we would get alerts, say, hey, you know, the information that you put in, it would just, it just passed such, such, you know, camera. So we get alerts for it all. Also, you can put in there, you know, information about, you know, if they have a stolen, stolen car, or a tag, or tags out, something like that, you know, but we have to monitor them ourselves. It's just for law enforcement purposes only. No one gets the information, we don't sell the information to anybody, it's just, it's just for us.
So what I was asking, so that's not being monitored locally, it being some nationwide locally, they're being monitored nationwide, it's monitoring, monitoring it.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. Obviously, we can't monitor all the different cameras they have, but you know, when we put information in, just like a stolen car, or we're looking for a certain type vehicle and all, then you know, we will get alert back just from that one, just from that one information that we put in. You know, like just, you know, obviously there's thousands of hits throughout the state of Florida and the United States, we don't monitor all that, you know, the different agencies that put it in, they're the ones that monitor it.
Yeah, I've seen Hamilton County, I travel in Hamilton County quite a bit, and everyone there entrance, they have them in Hamilton County. Probably see them going across.
129?
Yeah, two, well, actually 249, going across that, where you see them going and coming into Swanee, Hamilton County. So I see it as regularly, I mean, just like when you're going on the interstate or turn pack, you know, they're flashing, take your, your tag, and they send you a thing there for traveling on the turn pack.
Yeah, it works the same way, but we don't, we don't issue citation, you know, we don't issue citations from it, we don't clock your speed and anything like that, and we don't issue citations from it all. You know, St. John's County, they say you can't go in or out of St. John's County without, without getting on camera, and they've used theirs extensively, I'm not sure how many they got, but they got quite a few over in St. John's County.
How many cameras, I think Buddy had mentioned that you, well, Chief Williams said that you were going to have, yeah, I think it's eighteen now, y'all had, y'all was planning to get more, how many cameras are you planning to install?
That's all, you know, we're getting, all the ones that we, we've got some installed and just waiting for some more, but we're not getting, you know, anymore, obviously it, you know, it costs money to, you know, to divide them and put them up and so forth and everything, so, but we've got them, you know, placed out, you know, in different areas in the county that we think will be most beneficial to us.
Yeah.
Thanks, Sheriff, any more questions for Sheriff? Thanks, Sheriff. Are there any other constitutionals present?
No, sir, not on that one.
You can do it, you can comment on that at next meeting. Any other constitutionals? No, Commissioner, right, we're on our Commissioner, that was Commissioner Hale's item, any other Commissioner items? County Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, two things. First, earlier this week, I sat down with County Administrator Furry, and we're going over some issues, and.
Will you speak into the mic, please, sir?
Going over some issues with Mr. Furry, and we were talking about the impact fees and trying to get some numbers in front of you guys, so that way we can decide to move forward. The problem that I've had in trying to look into it is everybody gets real, plays real close to the vest when you call them asking for figures, and I wasn't able to get that information in a way that made it usable, so I think after talking with Jason and Holland, just asking the board, let's go ahead and just put it out to bid to see, for a request for proposals, let's just see how much it'll cost, and at least that way we're moving forward, rather than, I don't want to put it off me trying to badger people to get information just to get to the same end result of let's put out a request for proposals, so we just wanted to run that by the board, make sure you guys were okay with that.
Board members, y'all okay with that?
Yes.
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 Okay. Secondly, Mr. Chairman, I know you've been anxiously awaiting news regarding the audit, several members of the public have asked me specifically about the audit, because I am the board's point person, specifically I'm talking about the board's audit of the EOC, which was authorized back in April. In terms of status, just, there's been, as the board may recall, there's two elements to the audit. The first is regarding financial records of the EOC, and the second is regarding grant processes and procedures both within the county and within the EOC. My understanding is just this week, or just last week, was the last of the data gathering interviews that they needed to do regarding the grant management information. They have had the information that they need for the financial information part of the grant, part of the audit. So my understanding now, in speaking with, as recently as this afternoon, the leadership team at Cherry Beckett, is that the information gathering phase is over and mostly done, so now they're in the review and audit generate, and actually generating the audit paperwork itself into coming to their conclusions. So in terms of a timeline, I'd rather under-promise and over-deliver, so I would say out of an abundance of caution, look for this in November, but it'd be possible, you know, at the outer limits, so either this month or next month, in terms of a timeline to get it. But to be clear, they have not committed to a firm timeline as to when to get that to us, but they did give me an update as to where they were in the process.
If there's anything that they could do to expedite that, I think that, that this audit thing has turned into like an audit, it's not just an audit of the EOC, it's an audit of our policies too, because if we remember when we authorized the audit, we wanted to know if something went wrong, where it went wrong, who's responsible for it going wrong, and some of that dirt may be under our rug.
In fact, the data gathering that was done last week was with county staff for purposes of exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Chairman.
Right, so I think that there's a lot of members in the public that are anxious to know what happened and where, if anything, but I think that, that's where I'm anxious, like I'm ready to figure out what was broken, if anything, so we can fix it, so if you would ask them.
That has been communicated to them, but I've also told them, you know, I don't want to sacrifice quality for the sake of speed, so.
Well, I would agree with that too.
Whatever they need, get it done, but do your job.
Correct. You have anything else, Mr. Attorney, or does anybody have any questions for the County Attorney on those two things he spoke about, or anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next item, consultant items, are there any consultants present wishing to speak? None. All right, general business, item number 13, discuss with possible board action the transfer of collected Florida arts specialty license plate funds. Ms. Flanagan, is Ms. Flanagan not here? Let me see here. You know Ms. Flanagan? I guess we will table, we will table that and bring it back, because there's nothing in my agenda packet, I think Ms. Flanagan was going to educate us on that, and I don't have anything in here submitted by her, so we will.
Mr. Chairman, Keith, he might be able to speak to it, because I think he was putting together some numbers, I'm fine tabling it, but I just, if you want to.
Keith?
I don't have anything to add, but.
Okay.
I presented it to them, the information, but they'll read that line, the votes are open.
How much has been received?
Just under, just under $300, $296.
And she's asking for that to be dispersed to whom?
The Live Oak Artist Guilds?
Well, I mean, I hate to ask to table this over a $300 decision, because she's not present. Y'all have any questions, or? And to be clear, for the public's sake, I thought, heck for my sake, I almost said a bad word. These are revenues collected through the art, the art tag.
The tag.
Through the state, which are registered in Swanee County, the county gets a portion of those specialty plates, am I right, Mr. Morton?
Yes, sir, and it's dedicated to use for the arts.
For the arts.
And counties that have, like, library art programs and stuff like that, that's where it would get dedicated to, and what other, essentially when we're dealing with such a small sum of money, and the county government itself doesn't have a mechanism of spending it for furtherance of the arts, county governments have recognized certain groups as basically agents of the county for purposes of receiving those funds, so that's what they're asking for.
Thank you. And Mr. Gentry, what organization is Ms. Flanagan requesting the $300 go to?
Mr. Chairman, you probably best be speaking into the microphone.
What?
Mr. Gentry.
Oh, Mr. Gentry, he, he's telling you to speak into the microphone.
You know the rules.
After, after he, Mr. Furry put you on the spot.
My understanding is the Live Oak Artist Guild is wanting to be the designated receiver of those funds for the county, so the funding, so I believe the funds would come directly to them instead of coming through the county, the state would just send it to them, my understanding. Which is, like I said, it's only $296 that was received in 2025.
What, let me ask you this, Mr. Gentry, what's, what's your position on that? Is it, is, does it, here's my concern, is, is, those are governor revenues collected by the state, but go to the county, I would hate to designate, in lieu, out of caution, I'd hate to, I'm okay with it going to the Artist Guild, but I'd hate to take us out of that equation, because of future boards saying, hey, this money now is $10,000, and it's going straight to this nonprofit, how did that happen, and we not even, we'd be out of the loops? I don't, are we, are we doing a disservice to the county by, by cutting us out of that? For clarity purposes?
I don't believe so, I believe back in 2013 or 2012, if I'm not mistaken, that was going to, it was designated to another agency, maybe been to the Live Oak Artist Guild at that time, but I'm not sure why the board took it back, but.
Is this a yearly thing, or is this, does this have to be approved every year, or what's the?
Well, if they're designated as the recipient of these funds for the, for the county, then it would just be ongoing, it wouldn't have to be renewed every year.
But the money would still come to the county first?
That I don't have the answer to. My understanding is it was, it would go to the organization that's designated.
Here's what I, Ms. Betty's on the way to the podium, she's got something to say.
Sorry.
She can't bite her tongue any longer.
Arts to Swanee County, but in Madison County, I receive the funds, but it comes from the state, and they do come annually to check on my books. It doesn't come through the board in Madison, I'm not sure of how you all will have it set up, but it comes directly to the library, and I have to give an account directly and via our audits in Madison County to the state, the state requires.
No, that helps a lot. And I, I understand that, and board, I'm just one guy, but here's, my only caution is, is that the state's sending money directly to the libraries, which is a government agency. This is a different.
But the board, can it, in Madison County, they can make another decision also in terms of who receives the funds.
Right, my problem is, is that if, if, if we say yes, state, send this money straight to this, this guild, this nonprofit publicly ran organization, if the board is unknown that this organization dissolves 10 years from now, and that money's still going to the old treasurer at the time, and he's still getting it, but there is no organization, I don't want our board to be held liable, so what I would say is that the money should come to the board, and each year let the artist's organization make the requests, and then we disperse it annually, that way if there's ever, and also, who's to say there's not another, who's to say that this organization at some point, hopefully it doesn't, has a decline in attendance, but there's another up and coming one, and they say, well, we would like to have those funds, they only now have five members, but there's now 65 members, and this, you know, I mean, I don't want to shortchange any other.
Right.
Group that may ask for that.
But I think you would have, here I am, I'm the state now, right? I think that, that you would have the authority to make that decision, at least that's the way it goes, annually, where we are.
And that's why I say if we can continue to get the money to us, we have the, annually going to make the award, I'm okay giving the money to the request, to the requested today, I just say 10 years from now, who's to say the requested, even though there's a designated receiver by the state, 10 years from now, they're not even around anymore, but the money's still going to somebody.
Right.
You know, and they, you know, I think that if the county stays in the loop, that'd be better stewards to make sure that the money's going to a responsible party, that, I mean, the libraries is different, I mean, that's a, you know, I mean, you're involved with the state and the government anyway, they're already watching you. But y'all see what I'm saying?
I agree.
Mr. Chairman, and I don't, I don't disagree with you, and we may sit and say, oh, it's only $300, but I still, I think maybe, maybe the attorney could help with this too, I mean, just some more clarity on it, because.
Well, so.
It's, it's this particular organization now, or there are others out there as well?
So when this first came to our attention, this is probably maybe six or eight weeks ago, I spoke with Greg and Jason about it, and kind of the issue is, it, it's really a matter of time management, which means this, we don't want to have a beauty pageant over $300 where we pit a bunch of arts groups against each other's to come up here and put on a show to find out who's the most worthy for 300 bucks. And so that was the thought process behind this organization, it's legitimate, there are, it's got actual membership, they are active, they knew enough to come and ask for it, so the thought process was, because again, it's counterproductive to make local groups go after, you know, compete with each other, was the policy thought, and so, you know, I think probably the easy answer here to allay the chairman's concerns would be authorize it for this year, and then, you know, those groups are now on constructive notice, these funds are available, if the group asks for it again next year, just do it on a yearly basis, and that'll solve the process. It'd be one thing if it, instead of 300,000, it was 300,000, then sure, but since it's just 300 bucks.
Yeah, I just don't want to, I don't want our board, or I don't want to be a part of a board that sets a precedent, that 15 years from now, this thing gets way out of hand, like, well, y'all just designated these people, that money goes straight to them, and that, you know, I mean, I just, I don't want to get in that situation.
I understand, you can put the responsibility upon the organization to come request the money.
That's what I would say, and for this one, this request, I would, I'm okay with awarding it, but I need a motion.
Just for one, just for fiscal year 25, 26?
Correct.
2024, 24, 25?
Or 2020, whichever.
For all of it that's in there.
Okay.
$300.
What was collected?
However many years.
Yeah, 24, which fiscal year just ended, but last week, so.
Okay.
$296.
I have a motion by Commissioner Perkins. Second by Commissioner Mobley, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, five zero. Item number 14, discuss with possible board action the Springs Protection Zone of the Itchitucknee River, Mr. Alden Rosner, Parks and Recreation Director.
Just please. Serve on board.
And then, members of the public, when he's done with his presentation, the board will ask him some questions or whatnot, and then I'll ask for any members of the public wishing to speak on this item, and that'll be y'all's cue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. FWC has received a request for a Springs Protection Zone on the Lower Itchitucknee River. Specifically, this request is from the Itchitucknee Springs State Park Boundary to the Confluence at the Santa Fe River. FWC is required by statute to consult and coordinate with the Water Management District, the Department of Environmental Protection, and the governing bodies in which the spring protection zone being considered is located. FWC is requesting feedback from these bodies regarding this request, either for or against the Springs Protection Zone, specifically regarding whether or not the available evidence demonstrates significant harm, to include negative impacts to water quality, water quantity, hydrology, wetlands, and aquatic and wetland-dependent species, predominantly caused by the operation, anchoring, mooring, beaching, or grounding of vessels, such that a spring protection zone is necessary and appropriate in the requested area. FWC is seeking feedback about the need for this protection zone by October 20, excuse me, October 24th of this year, and in your additional packets, you can see the original request dated July 29th for this zone, with supplemental, supplemental information provided in the packet dated September 28, uh, September 8th.
So, Mr. Rosner, in essence, the FWC is asking for this board's opinion on the matter?
Correct, either support for the Springs Protection Zone or against the Springs Protection Zone. It is my understanding that this particular Springs Protection Zone is seeking primarily two things, one, a statutory no-wake zone from the state park down to the Santa Fe, and a request to prohibit personal water crafts, which would be like jet skis, not vessels, but just jet skis on that section of the river as well.
So no-wake zone on the entire section of the river, basically, from the park?
From the bridge, the 27 Bridge South.
Okay, and then no jet skis?
Yes, sir.
Period on the river?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Rosner?
Is there, there's no, not a no-wake zone there now?
So the best information I have found is that there is a no-wake zone extending 300 300 feet from the conflu, in every direction from the confluence of the Itchutucknee and the Santa Fe, but there is not, it's widely perceived by many that there is one, but there's nothing that I've been told is in effect on that section of the river.
Well, it would just make common sense. You don't, it's a, it's a idle zone all the way up, I think. I mean, I've lived here all my life, and you just gotta have a little respect. It's, it's a sad day that we gotta, gotta do things like that, but, I mean, it is what it is, but common sense, you would think would rule.
Well, clearly, there's some folks lacking common sense.
So, we're
We'll be having a discussion today. Commissioner Perkins?
So we're saying from 27 on back down, back down toward Elly Ray's back that way?
Yes.
Is that south?
Where across the Santa Fe.
Where the, yes, where the, it's 27, across the Itchutucknee back, I guess it'd be south to the Santa Fe River.
Okay. I was just wondering why, I know there's, there's a lot of traffic. I've been down there, and there's a lot of traffic, I mean, keep 75 back that way, a lot of traffic going down, going down back towards Elly Ray's. So, so you just going to just take that one area and not go further back up, or?
That's what the request was, was for, was for, for just the Itchutucknee River, not the Santa Fe.
Not at all. Well, members, anybody, any of y'all have any more questions before I ask for the public?
No questions.
Okay. Members of the public, y'all, I'll just call y'all by name, and if you choose not to speak, just wave your hand and we'll pass over you. First one on the list I have is Mr. David, David Gilchrist, 302 Southwest Riverside Avenue, Fort White. Welcome, sir. You don't have to state your name and address, I just did that one for you.
Did a good job.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Fourth generation Floridian, lived in Florida all my life. I have grandsons which visit from Atlanta, and we have, we do a camp for them. And my, the oldest grandson is now six, he's got his own kayak here, and we scout for wildlife and enjoy that. He enjoys nature, as my family does. We want to see the ecology of the river in all its different means, as was stated previously, for the next generation, current generation, next generation. That's it in brief, the others can speak in more details.
Yes, sir. We appreciate it. I assume you're in support of the no-wake zone. Yes. Ms. Mary Lee Gipson, 2070 Southwest County Road 138, Fort White. Welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, Mary Lee Gipson. Been a while since I've been in these meetings. Thank you for having me back regarding this particular issue. I, I, I own a recreational tourism business on the Santa Fe River. We do service our customers to the Itchutucknee. We also service to 129, which we appreciate, to your point. Would be nice to see that all the way to Elly Ray's, but I don't think we're quite prepared for that today. But in terms of the Itchutucknee, for the next generation, somewhat like the previous speaker said, it's important that now we do something to protect it. And the no-wake, my understanding is that's only during high water events. It says no-wake, and I was out there when we posted them. At the last time when we had something similar like this, we did a no-wake zone, three different zones, when the rivers were higher, because we recognized, everybody recognized a state through their studies, that there was a different level of the river because of the different water hydrology. So, my understanding that no-wake right now is only when there's high water. So unless you know something else different than that, I don't think it's a no-wake permanently. And so in the future, you know, with the no-wake on the, the state park side, we see the difference. You see the difference. I mean, that's enough, tell, tell story right there, especially in terms of erosion. And it isn't just jet skis, let's be really clear. Jet skis are, you stand on it, it's got a handle, you gotta, you know, do that with it. Wave runners are really what we're talking about, where you sit, you're comfortable, you're on the water all day, you're gassing it up, you got lots of tanks, you rip up and down the river, and it's like this. It's very concerning, to the point of having people in the water, swimmers, tubers, people, children, that you can't see their little heads in. It's really a problem. If you want to see it, you can see it all on YouTube, because they film themselves. Thank you very much for letting me say anything.
Well, thank you for correcting me on jet skis. I call all those things jet skis, but I guess jet skis you stand up on, but I didn't know the difference. I don't, I don't own one, obviously. Next person, Ms. Linda McCall, 1120 Southwest Riverside Avenue. Welcome, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I actually lived on the river. I was born in '49, my parents were camping on the river, and then, as soon as lots went for sale, my dad bought a lot. And so I've been there on the river, off and on, since 19, I guess we moved there in '58. And so I've seen a lot of changes, and I live there now full-time, so I see it, you know, every day, what's going on. The, the jet skis are very destructive, because they churn up the water very badly. And then the flying up and down the river, we have so many tubers and swimmers, it's, it's very dangerous. And I'm in full support of the Springs Protection Zone. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next up, Ms. Vonda Ackerson, 1191 Southwest Santa Fe Drive, Fort White. Oh, did I say it wrong?
No, I wrote it wrong.
Oh.
It's Riverside Avenue.
Oh.
We have one also in Santa Fe.
Okay.
My name is Vonda Ackerson. I'm here on behalf of the Three Rivers Estates Property Owners Incorporated, and I'm here to give them a voice. We do wholeheartedly support the Spring Protection Zone, and I'd like to share why. Our community, like I said, as it was spoken, runs the distance from the 27 Bridge down to the confluence where it runs into the Santa Fe. And we have jet skis coming up in there, and usually a jet ski doesn't come alone, or a wave runner, well, it's them jet skis. They don't come alone, and it's, it's no, at any time, 20 can come up in there together. In April, we lost count, it was over 100. So you have like a three-mile span, and you've got 100 wave runners, jet skis, whatever, they're going to the bridge, turning around and coming back. So then you've got muck everywhere. And, you know, if you're a floater, if you're a kayaker, we do all of these things, anyone that, that lives there. And it's just, it's churning up the water, because they're, they're going, because they're gunning it. We, I always thought, I've, I've been in the area forever. I was six weeks old when I took my first float down the Itchutucknee, according to my mother. So I've been there, you know, just growing up on that. And I consider the pedestrians of the waterway are your, your swimmers, your floaters, your kayakers, kind of bicycles, and people on land. And I just feel that at this time, there, there are no-wake zones now. There are signs up that say no-wake, they've been there for years, and no one still doesn't pay attention to them. And we have on different accounts when people have almost been hit by the jet skis or, or a boat or whatever. We have called FWC, but they can't really do anything, because the people are within their right to gun it all the way down the springs and back. And it's just, it's putting, I mean, all of us, I would probably say at some point, have had a close call with some flotation with an engine on, on the river. So, we totally support this no-wake zone, and to keep these engines of wave runners, jet skis, whatever they are, off of the river. Now, the Santa Fe let them go, but we just need, it's not very wide, and I'm sure most of you are familiar with the Itchutucknee. It's not that wide to accommodate everybody, but it's there for everyone to enjoy sensibly. And we don't want a death or something occurring, because they're not paying attention and having too much fun.
Yes, ma'am.
So
I understand.
We do support the Spring Protection Zone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Next up, Ms. Kathy Riker of 183 Southwest Kansas Street, Fort White.
Good evening. I've been living in Three Rivers Estates since 2018. I'm a fifth-generation Floridian, and I have, I am legally blind, so when I get out on the river, I always go with a friend. My biggest issue is safety, simply because I'll get out on my kayak, you get, it seems to happen every time, I'll get around to a corner, I'll be staying to the right with my party, and one of those things comes flying around the corner. I've almost been hit three or four times, four times for sure. After the fourth time, I haven't been back on the river for a year. And I would love to be able to go safely back out on the river and enjoy myself where I bought my home. So, I am very much in favor of the SP, SPZ.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Riker. Next up, Mr. David Morgan of 220 Southwest Riverside Avenue. Welcome, sir.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot to add, except that I'm the guy that started filming manatees. I put up a lot of cameras, because I'm not there all the time, and I wanted to see them, so when I'm not there, I can kind of relax and look at the river. And in that process, manatees almost never trip the camera, but, but the boats do. Whether they're going up over 10 miles an hour, or the personal watercraft doing S-turns and what the equivalent would be of a doughnut. So I started kind of documenting it and putting it out, and asking people, you know, is this something that we can put restriction on? And initially, I had written a letter to FWC saying they're not obeying, they're not obeying the idle speed no-wake. And I got a very nice letter back and said, well, there isn't one, but here's what you can do to start trying to set one of those up. So, thank you for, thank you for your consideration. I'm in favor of the Spring Protection Zone.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Next up, Mr. Larry, how do I say that, Sire?
Seri.
Seri, of 150 Northwest 96th Place, Brantford. Welcome, sir.
I'm here in favor of the spring protection, and mainly because of the water safety. I'm not water issue or manatee, you know, even or big problem. The water safety, I personally witnessed a canoe with a father, child, and a dog and wife towing a paddleboard, and a boat came around them, cut in between them, and pers, took the paddleboard under the boat and trapped it down there. And just five minutes before, the young child, about five years old, was on that paddleboard under a towel, and she would have been underwater for two, three minutes, because it got tangled up in the front of the boat. And also, right going upstream from the bridge, the railroad bridge, the boats and the jet skis have to gun it to get through the current. And because of, the river hooks to the right, it's a complete blind spot. And going upstream or downstream is a major safety issue, and something should be done about that, because the jet skis can go past the bridges, they just can't go into the park. And that's a major issue right there. And I just want to protect what we have, the Itchutucknee is a jewel. And I think everyone's in support of that, but we need to keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next up, Mr. James Mullis, 399 Southwest Central Terrace, Fort White.
Thank you. I'm, I'm supportive of the Spring Protection Zone as well, for a lot of the reasons that they say. Safety, a lot, dog tubers, and a lot of people on paddleboards and kayaks. But I'm also for the wildlife. All the vegetation by these jet skis and wave runners are being chewed up, and it's going downstream, and it's leaving the habitat for the animals are no longer there. And I've noticed that the mullet, the fish that migrate up there have been very limited this year compared to the last year, because of all the jet skis eating it up. We were just now getting the eel grass back, and that's what they eat. And then a concern for the manatees, because they go up and down the river, and they mate, they, they have their children up there. But the safety with the people on the water, it's the biggest concern, and I very much support this spring safety area. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next up, Mr. William Bessent, did I say that correct, of 122 Southwest Albany Terrace, Fort White. Welcome, sir.
I don't have much to add, other than I'm for the protection zone, obviously. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next up, Mrs. Karen Saunders, 122 Southwest Albany Terrace. Welcome, ma'am.
So, so I'm a paddleboarder, and I've been going down the Itchutucknee my whole life. And the concern, like one of the commissioners said, is just kind of common sense, when there are people in tubes and swimming, and even kayaks and all. Some of these boats and jet skis are just going really, really fast. It's a shame that they don't use their common sense, but we'd like to empower the FWC to be able to do something about that. And if any of y'all have seen, for instance, some of the manatees and the scars on them, those are from boats. So the manatees are kind of like swimmers, so we don't want that to happen to people, certainly children. And the people that are in the tubes are kind of like a turtle on its back, you know? I mean, they can't, they can't get out of the way. So if, if the people were going slowly and enjoying the river, like everyone else is, then we could have just all be safe.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Next up, Ms. Hilda Gilchrist of 302 Southwest Riverside Avenue. Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. So, I agree with everything that has been said. My approach, or my speech is going to focus on water clarity. The water clarity is really what makes the Itchutucknee, or spring-run streams, among the most productive aquatic habitats. But if you don't have that clarity, that the penetr, the penetration of the light all the way to the bottom, you lose the salve or the submerged aquatic vegetation that's required for food, for all the little things that are listed, yet we are missing a lot of those species, or at least their numbers are greatly dwindled, because that's just not any, there anymore. So I just look forward to you doing the right thing, and endorsing this no-wake zone and protection. The other thing I want to show you is, there's plenty of area for gunning your boat, or doing the, the active recreation, not the passive recreation, that's really all that should be taking place on the Itchutucknee, passive recreation. That's what that narrow channel of spring run supports. You have, I don't know, 270 mi, let's see, 246 miles of Swanee River, 75 miles of the Santa Fe. Plenty of room for recreation. But the, the itch is only seven miles. Three of them are already protected by the state. We want you to help us protect the other. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Quarterman, you're my last guy. We know where you stand on it, but I kind of got the car before the horse earlier, so if you'd like to speak again. And that is Mr. John S. Quarterman of P.O. Box 88 Hayhire.
Thank you. I have a, I should mention, my grandmother was from Luraville. I have a clarification.
Me too.
Excuse me?
Me too.
Alrighty then. We could be cousins.
That's the truth down there.
Might be.
So I have a clarification and two points I didn't say. Clarification is, I was referring to the boats on the Santa Fe River as a contrast. I wasn't recommending a no-wake zone on the Santa Fe, at least not at this time. And our expedition leader on that particular expedition, I convinced her, I hope, we really don't want to be paddling on that section of the Santa Fe when the boats are out anymore. So, on the Itchutucknee, if, as you've heard many people attest, that these powerboats on Itchutucknee are a danger to human safety, then it seems to me they're also a danger to aquatic and wetland-dependent species, because, you know, a turtle or a manatee can't get out of the way any faster than people can. So that's, that's my first point. My second point is, according to your board packet and the presentation, what the FWC is asking for is whether or not the available evidence demonstrates significant harm. But if you look at the actual statute that what their request is based on, it says to protect or prevent significant harm, protect and prevent. And if you look at the proposed rule they've drafted, it says protect or prevent. And if you think of it from the point of view of prevention, then you don't really have to decide whether the available evidence to decide whether the available evidence demonstrates significant harm right now. It's enough to say that you don't want significant harm. And of course, you're an elected body. You're not required to stick to the letter of their request. So I once again ask that you support the springs protection zone. If I could say a couple of words about water quality testing since Commissioner Hale brought that up. Wednesday of next week in Valdosta, there's going to be five Georgia state senators listening about tourism. As part of that, I'm going to bring up the task force request for the city of Valdosta to do more water quality testing. And I'm going to ask them to get the state of Georgia to provide more funding for water quality testing. So I thought you might want to know that. And some news you haven't heard yet, but I'm sure you will. The Valdosta city manager has resigned.
This.
Oh, you have heard that?
Did hear this yesterday.
Alrighty. That's what I got for you right now, unless you got more water quality testers. We got some on the Santa Fe, Itchituckni, and Swanee. We're always looking for more.
Thank you, Mr. Quarterman. Are there any other, yes, sir, Mr. Rosner, are there any other members from the public wishing to speak that I didn't have a comment card for? Alright, Mr. Rosner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did just want to clarify one point from FWC's perspective is that safety is not taken into consideration by FWC for the establishment of a springs protection zone. It is the demonstration of significant harm from the vessels to the environment.
Thank you, Commissioner White.
Doesn't Columbia County have to agree to this, too?
No, it did.
Did they agree to the whole springs protection thing or just the no-wake zone?
If one of you guys come on, if one of y'all that are familiar with the topic want to come up.
Yes, sir.
That way we're not having 10 versus two or whatever.
2634 Southwest Santa Fe Drive. I am the author of this petition, so I'm happy to address any questions. Yes, Columbia County met Friday and unanimously voted to accept the entire springs protection zone proposal, that being the no-wake zone as well as restricting jet skis from the lower Itchituckni.
Well, that's, I didn't read that part. I got the no-wake part, but I didn't, I didn't see where they banned jet skis.
It was without, the motion was without exclusion. I haven't seen what they wrote up, but the motion was without exclusion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hale.
Just speaking to what Commissioner White was saying, I don't have a problem with the no-wake zone. I do have a problem, and I'll just speak from the heart. My grandfather was a State Park Ranger at Swanee River State Park for 20 something years. I have property on the river. Love it. We have nieces and nephews that have PWCs. We get to visit Hart Springs. We get to visit Fannin Springs, but we do it responsibly.
Yes, sir.
Which is what I believe the main ask here is. And then just to eliminate those bothers me because not everyone can paddle a paddleboard or canoe. Not everyone could afford a boat, but they can afford some apparatus, if you, a water vessel, to enjoy, I think, the same things we do. But again, they must do it responsibly, in my opinion.
If you'll give me some latitude, I'd like to address that. Thank you. The very design of the PWCs is such that it brings water up from underneath the hole and then shoots it out the back. It's basically a vacuum cleaner going down the river. In a shallow stream run like the Itchituckni, what you're doing is lifting the sediment off the bottom of the river, which is where all of your SAV, your invertebrates, your small critters, crawfish, live, and you're destroying the river bottom. That's the ecological basis for eliminating the jet skis in addition to the safety issues which everybody has talked about and could not be included in the petition. It's not under the statute. So they, because of the design on a shallow stream run such as the Itchituckni, you cannot run a jet ski without damaging the river. Now, I live on the Santa Fe. We got jet skis out there. Have at it. Same thing on the Swanee.
I don't know, just like to hear the rest of my board's thoughts on this, but the other part that scares me is, and I understand that part, and I know that...
Yes, sir. And a prop boat is a very different, it's a different design. Not that they don't damage the river, but they're chopping the vegetation as they go as opposed to stirring it up.
And I guess, but the other question would be, there's other boats, if you will, vessels that are boats that are jet propulsion.
Correct.
Can we eliminate those as well? Is that part of this?
This does not because PWC is a defined class of watercraft. As I understand it, the CDO jet propulsion boats that you're referring to do not fall under PWC, so they would not be included in this, but that'll be an FWC legal decision. This petition only asked for PWCs because there was no, I agree with you, those other jet propulsion boats are equally guilty, but there was no way of addressing them nor collecting the data to support the petition for that small class of boats. We've got, I think, only one that I see regularly on the itch. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm of the same opinion as Mr. Hale. Like I said, I've been up the Itchituckni many times with my boat, and you got to have a little respect and a little bit of common sense. And you don't, you just idle up and idle back and you enjoy it. That's, that's the point. As an elected official, I've got to try to look out for everybody that's involved. So my opinion is kind of the same. I don't have a problem with the no-wake zone. I'm absolutely for that, all the way up, but I don't know that I would be for banning the watercraft.
Thank you. I respectfully disagree, but...
I understand.
You're in charge. Anything else for me?
Not, no, but you might want, you might want to hang close.
No, I'm not leaving.
I mean, like, you know, front row, there may be some, we're going to have some discussion, so.
Mr. Hale, did you have another question?
No, I thought I did, but I don't recall what I was going to say now.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Well, to echo what you guys said, I'm 1,000% in support of the no-wake zone. 1,000% all the way up from the Santa Fe to the bridge. My concern, I agree with you guys. The only thing where I would differ a little bit is I understand, you know, because I've seen them myself when, and I'm not, I don't, I don't own a wave runner, I don't own a jet ski, but I don't dislike ones that do. But when these, those folks get together, and you see it with four-wheelers and buggies and riverbed, dry riverbeds on the La Paz River in Swanee County. When you put 30 or 40 or 50 of those machines together in a wad, there's a lot more damage can be done than one or two idling versus 50 of them, two or three of them's going to be going fast. They just can't help it. There's always a daredevil in the bunch. I don't know as, as this board, I mean, Columbia County's, they're at the table, too. If there was a way to say, hey, the first quarter mile, PWCs are allowed, but not the rest of the way. I don't know how FWC can enforce that. So I'm a little leery to sit up here and try to approve something that I don't think is enforceable. And we got an attorney over here who might could add. I don't know what he knows about rivers, but these are soft hands. I 1,000% agree that there should be no-wake zone and people should be respectful, but also know, no matter what rule or law you make, there's going to be ones that break it. And my only concern, I don't really have a concern with the personal watercrafts that are idling and being respectful going up the river. My concern is those large parties and how you regulate those, that there's always going to be a show-off or a daredevil in every group. And you put 100 of those things together or 50 of them going up the river, some of them are going to be having disrespectful fun. But I don't know how you make a rule to enforce that. I don't, but that's kind of my two cents. If there was a way to say, hey, the first two curves, you can bring your, it's no-wake all the way from the Santa Fe, but the first quarter mile, you can have a jet ski. The river is wider there. It is a little deeper there in some places, most places than it is at the bridge. But I don't know how you draw a line across the river. I see FWC's problem with how to post that, saying, hey, you got a quarter mile of river, you can ride your jet ski up, but anything, or wave runner, anything past that, the river gets narrower and shallow or, but I don't know how you enforce that. That's, that's just my two cents. Yes, sir. Commissioner Perkins.
You know, I understand how we're in court, too. I know that we all want to enjoy the water, and people do buy their, their different boats or whatever type it's been used on the water. But then I think about looking at it to preserve the life of the river and all the vegetation and all the animals there and for the safety of the people, you know? And how we control that, I'm reflecting back to even seeing there on the Silver Spring that they're not stopping the folks from coming in, but they allow them to come in, but they at a, at a low speed. So how do we allow them to still have their boats or jet skis or go to ride in there? I know that's, that's one of the biggest problems, but, I mean, they, they come in and you there that with common sense. But a lot of times folks have common sense because the people are drinking out there, they're, you know, and they want to gun it, they want to show off their little, how fast their boats are or whatever. So, I mean, if you can't, if you post something, if that going to be effective, if you don't have somewhere of being able to enforce it, are we going to have anybody there all that we can help enforce that or? How can, why can we educate the people, you know, from this point to this point, you cannot come in? I've been at the Itchituckni in, my first experience there jumping in that water when my wife was alive, but I remember jumping in the water with swimming and everything, and then I found I couldn't swim back upstream, so I got in trouble to get out and jump across the river and swim back. But it was enjoyable, though people went down and enjoyed the river. But how do we make it safe for everybody and enjoyable for everybody? And then also for them, I know we were talking about the manatees and all those things, too, and we said all the time, they're, they're being destroyed by this. So how do we do a joint effort with Columbia County to be able to resolve this issue? I'm like, even Commissioner White, I know the folks got their, their boats and they want to go down there and show them off and thing, but somewhere we got to put a stop there.
Yes, sir. Any other comments from the board? Any questions for the attorney here, Ms. Weisman?
Mr. Chairman, one thing just to address your concern is just two things. One, in terms of, pun intended, let's not get out over our skis. This is a recommendation to Fish and Wildlife as to what they're going to do. But in terms of enforcement, Fish and Wildlife would be in charge. I mean, the state of Florida owns all the navigable waterways of the state of Florida, so Fish and Wildlife would be responsible for patrolling and enforcement. Same as if you're out on your boat and having a little bit too much of a good time, Fish and Wildlife are the ones who pull you over. They'd be responsible if they wanted to, to sit down there and police it and patrol it and give tickets.
Well, I mean, I understand that. My problem with saying no personal watercrafts on the Itchituckni River whatsoever is, you know, a lot of times there are respectful people that maybe the parents and the small children have a boat and the teenage 18, 20-year-old son, who's a respectful, good kid, he has a jet ski, just like folks have Polaris Rangers and the child rides the four-wheeler. How do you tell the kid, hey, you can't follow your parents up to the mouth of the river and go 50 yards and anchor? That jet ski cannot go in that clear water or you will get a ticket, but yet their boat can. I don't know. I just don't want to ruin, you know, every bad apple ruins it for everybody.
Mr. Chairman.
So trying to be respectful of that. Commissioner Perkins.
Well, then, with that sense, FWC would be the one controlling everything. Well, can we refer it into their hands and let them make the judgment call as to how to do this or how they want to be able to regulate it?
I think that's what they're, yeah. I think that's what they're asking for us to do is what is our recommendation? But yes, I think that they're looking for a consensus from our board to say, hey, we're okay with X, Y, and Z. Or Y and Z, or just Y.
I think if you made an example out of some of them, you probably slowed that down a lot. Make it steep.
Mr. Chairman, too?
Commissioner, Mr. Morrison.
I've been called worse. The, not much, though.
Yeah, you called him Seminole.
After this weekend. Alright. No, but I just want to bring to the board's attention, there's more than one way to skin a cat. So from what I'm hearing from the board is that everybody on the board approves the no-wake zone. So the board would then have two, I'm hearing, and I've looked at it, it's a two-tiered request. So the board can have no opinion as to whether or not to allow the personal watercraft and not make a recommendation, or the board could object to allowing the personal watercraft. So that would be, as an easy way to package the recommendation, would be an approval with either no comment or an objection to the personal watercraft ban. That would be how to structure it, for what y'all want to do.
Board, what y'all want to do?
I want a no-wake zone, but not, I don't want to do away with the watercraft.
Do you want to limit the watercraft, to restrict them to an area or just, just have no opinion whatsoever?
I just don't know how you do that.
Yeah, I don't know how you enforce it either.
Can we get a no-wake zone, which has going to speak for that you can't have with a certain speed going in, so?
Well, I've asked FWC about the speed thing, and there's just no way. When this came up before, I've asked them about the speeding, and there's no way for them to clock the speed and enforce it in court. So you can just make it a no-wake zone and they can get them for that.
Yeah, the no-wake.
I agree with the no-wake.
Yeah, no-wake.
I think you got, Mr. Rosner, I think you got consensus that the board agrees to no-wake zone. I think you got consensus on that. Now, the discussion is PWCs or no PWCs? And I don't, I, I'm just going to say I don't have an opinion on it. That's me. I'll let them make the decision, FWC, on how they can afford, enforce it. But the rest of y'all get an opinion, too. I'm looking.
I've stayed at mine.
Yep, yeah.
I just don't want a no-wake zone. I want a no-wake zone. That's all I'm looking for. No-wake zone.
No-wake.
Unanimous no-wake zone. And we don't, no opinion on the PWCs. But unanimous consensus, no-wake zone. Swanee County supports that. You got that, Mr. Rosner? And Mr. Rosner, you will report that back to FWC? Are you the contact for them?
I can.
Okay. Okay. Alright. So we are done with that unless there's any other comment. We're going to move along to item, and y'all, and I'll, I'll tell y'all, just like I told the 4-H kids, if y'all are here for that specific item, we won't take it disrespectful if you guys want to leave now, unless you want to sit here and enjoy the show. We're going to start charging admission. Just kidding, Mr. Perkins. Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank y'all for coming. Yes, sir. Thank y'all for coming. Item number 15, discuss with possible board action county roads within the city limits. This is my agenda item. I think all of you commissioners have probably at some point or another, except for Commissioner White, but the rest of us have all had our districts touch the city limits of Live Oak, and we've heard this, why isn't this road paved? Why is this road, you know, the road situation? So recently, there was a pretty aggressive, I won't say attack, but approach on a couple of us on a particular road inside the city limits that is owned by the county. And as the commissioner that preceded me and the commissioner that preceded him and him and him told the same answer to me as I told the person requesting, why wasn't this road fixed? And it was because the city owns the infrastructure under the road. We're not going to pave a road to have the city come cut their pipes up to patch it because of the aging. No disrespect to the city whatsoever. But, well, the constituent said, well, the city didn't tell me that. They just told me y'all on the road. I said, well, I'm here to tell you that they do have plans and are seeking funds to fix their infrastructure, and they do have grants that they have written that haven't been approved yet. Hopefully, they will be, that will fix a lot of those problems on updating their infrastructure. I, I hope they get them. But this led me to thinking and asking our county attorneys, like, hey, why do we even own roads inside the city limits? Like, that's their sandbox. Why don't we just give them the roads? Then, then they can pave them or not pave them or close them or do whatever they want to do with them. Hence, that discussion started. And I don't know all the legalities. That's why we have Mr. Morrison, but he can speak to some of those if y'all have questions. But my approach is, Mr. Furry has passed out a list here tonight of county roads that he is aware of. There's roads on this list that are not. These are just all of the county roads, and obviously, this list is old because none of these roads are 911 named. They're all, so you need to update your data there, Mr. Furry. Some of these, I don't even know where these are at. Brown's Highway? I never heard of Brown's Highway. But anyway, or... But anyway, or Horry-Harry Road. Where's Horry-Harry Road? And who named that?
I didn't know that.
36A.
36A.
This is 136A. Oh, there it is.
I didn't know Brown's Road was 34.
I didn't even look at the road numbers. My bad. I was looking at the names. Nonetheless, the discussion is, what is the board's stance? And Mr. Morrison, what are our options on asking to, and the city could say, no, we don't own the roads. Y'all keep them. Well, there you go. But hopefully, I would think that if they're pursuing grants, they're going to be seeking and have to provide ownership for the grant money that they're requesting to make an improvement on the property. So if they're asking for updated infrastructure and resurfacing of a particular street, well, they're, the state agency or the federal agency is going to have approval for ownership of that particular street. If they don't have it, then they're going to have to ask permission from us. I just think we need to get out of the way and give them the streets. That's just my opinion. If it's in the city limits, why is the county even on it? Give them to the city. Let them, we'll get out of their sandbox because obviously, they're not really in ours. And let them do what they would like with the streets. It's just my two cents. Commissioner Perkins?
Yeah, I too. I've been also been confronted by them with the issues of the roads in the city. One of the main ones was Helveston. And I thought that was a state road at one time. He said, no, it's county road. But anyways, it's a real bad road and we looked at that. But in speaking with, can't get his name, but CRA, he spoke, you know, they at the city hall meeting, I was at the city hall meeting up here. And he was saying, they are seeking funds and through grants to be able to repair the infrastructure. And he was asking if we could help by repairing the roads, paving it. Here the thing is, is if we give them the roads, that's one thing. Majority of my district or portion of my district or highway is in the city. And so if we give the roads to them, then I still have to have those as constituents in the city that will be asking for help in the city. There's a road that they're asking for our help with. They're about to put in, well, I think it's 200 homes there on behind the old Swanee pack over there. And there's a portion of the road that they want to have repaired. They're have paved. You know, Mr. Scott, in this time, in this tenure, he had said that unfair because I have a lot of roads in the city. I have the majority of the city. So, and those citizens pay tax as well. So I have to be there, force for the city here. So in trying to work with the city council and those trying to be able to repair roads or get them done, there are some that need repair. But yes, a lot of infrastructure is bad in the city. So they are looking to repair. So I will come back and ask for some help to, maybe we can help repair some of the roads.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to helping the city whatsoever. I mean, we helped pave Palm. And there was another one there that we helped pave. I'm not opposed to helping them whatsoever. But when the, when it comes to ownership, I just, I don't know why we would continue to want to own, to own the road inside the city. I'm not saying we would not help the city with any project that they need help with, whether it's us hauling the basin or us, you know, us paving it with our machine. Day by the asphalt, we pave the road. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, actual ownership of the road, why would we want to continue to own the road? Like, ownership, that's, I mean, that's the only thing that I'm talking about.
And I wonder why we, at first, I'm like you were saying, why do we want with the road, Helveston, why did that come into the county, I mean, the county anyway, in the city? I'm not sure how. But yeah, I mean, I'm not opposing either that we give the road right to them. But still, also whoever, the county commissioner, want to help them in that area, you know, as far as repairing roads or paving roads.
Right. Yeah, I'm not opposed to helping the city, you know, if they ask, hey, would y'all mind helping us, you know, pave this section of the road or whatnot with y'all's equipment? It's short and the mobilization fee is astronomically higher than the actual job itself is. So would y'all mind helping? I'm not opposed to that. I just think of the actual legal ownership. Why are we still owning roads inside the city limits?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hale? Yeah, I don't disagree with either one of y'all's statement. What'd you say, the sandbox? In their sandbox? It's city, it's within the city limits. I don't see, and some of these, I think some of you guys may know, I didn't know until doing some research, some of those roads were given to the county by the state many years ago. And again, I don't know why it hadn't been addressed before this, being city, within the city limits and being city roads, if you will. But I don't have a problem with if that's something we want.
Well, the state just want to get out money. So they give it to the county. So the county have to hit it. Because like Old Nanny, you know, that's 5th Street. And that's kind of a road. That road probably got brick in there and concrete and asphalt.
Anyway, you know, we can ask, I mean, this, it says with possible board action, but I mean, we can.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Mr. Morrison?
If the will of the board, I mean, there's two practical impediments to it, even assuming the board wants to give the roads over. The first is, does the city want to accept them? Because they can just say no, in which case, we're up a river, as it were, in terms of wanting to give it to them. And the second, if they do want to, then it's a matter of negotiating the transfer and who's going to pay for the survey because the survey work will be extensive. That would be necessary in order to do this. But I would think is kind of a preliminary step, which would require board action, if it's the will of the board to give the roads within the city limits to the city of Live Oak, my thought would be, the first thing you do before you can do anything is make an offer, right? And that would require board action. So if the will of the board is to do that, then there would, my thought would be to have the board authorize me to write a letter to the city on the board's behalf, formally offering to convey to the city all of the roads contained within the city limits of the city of Live Oak, which are owned by the county, and direct it to the chairman of their board as well as their mayor, and then put the ball in their court and see what they do with it. I mean, that's kind of the best we can do.
Two things. One, I fully support that letter to the city, telling them, hey, we're willing to give y'all the roads. But secondly, my question is, is why would we have to spend an exorbitant amount of, I forget what word you used, but a lot of money surveying? Why can't you just say, hey, from, the county has given up X street and all of its right of way contained there within? Without, I mean, why do we got to go out and do a meets and bounds survey of a road that's been there for, let's say, 150 years? Why we got to spend money surveying that and do meets and bounds when we can just say, hey, we're giving you Helveston Street and all the right of way there within contained. But we're not surveying every sidewalk and every light pole and every center line? What does it matter?
Because in the conveyance of real property, you have to have a meets and bounds description and just, I mean, we've all seen those descriptions which say to the center line of the road. Those technically work, but, you know, we're literally in the business of government. And so if we're going to make a conveyance, it has to accurately describe the property that's going to be conveyed.
Accurately describing wouldn't be Helveston Street that's been a street for the last 150 years, which should pass any and all prescriptions.
Yeah, but how much?
I'm not a lawyer, so I'm trying to argue with a lawyer, but I'm not a lawyer.
I'll give you the Helveston example.
No, I mean, that just makes no damn sense to me. Why we got to go survey and spend $50,000 surveying a road that's been a road for 100 years?
I'm going to give you the Helveston example. And it's sad that I know this. Because if you actually look at what is titled to the city or to the county, we actually, our right of way is 40 feet in. So we actually own a whole lot of those people's yards. All right? So we just can't, if we just convey the paved area known as Helveston, that doesn't solve our problem. And we end up having this weird, where the county's going to own all this piece of people's yards, which was conveyed as right of way when the state originally condemned all that as roads. And so it's not used. And so that's the reason you would have to go get a meets and bounds description.
But you're telling me, hold on, I ain't done yet. This will make no sense to me. So you're telling me that the only way you can give an existing road of 150 years that's been paved, brick, dirt, whatever it was, there's no way to give it other than hire a surveyor to go out there and survey that, albeit knowing that at some point, when that infrastructure, whatever street it is, is done or it's bid, part of the bid package in the engineering will be a survey of that. But we can't convey property rights without a meets and bounds, period.
I'm telling you that as a matter of passing title, you have to have a meets and bounds description and just saying, the road doesn't cut it. And if anybody ever got into, let's say, a battle over what is or was not conveyed, you have to have it accurately describe it and just saying, the paved road that we've all been there for 150 years doesn't cut it.
Commissioner Hale?
So do, just on the heels of that, I know this is a crazy question, and I'm hearing everything you guys are debating here. So do we have a survey? When the state chose to give it to the county, was there a survey done at that point?
Hell no.
And my other question is, what, other than what you're saying, I think I understand what Adam's saying, what Mr. Morrison's saying, is you're giving.
If you're going to convey real property, you have to have a legal description.
But it doesn't change anything. The road is the road. And we're not allowing anyone to take anybody's property.
Well, but on Helveston, we do own like 40 feet into those people's property. That's just true.
That's crazy.
It is crazy.
It's 20 foot from the center line to the outside and both sides.
I mean, the reason I know is because Mr. Sellers is friends with one of them, came into my office yelling at me about it. I was like, what do you want me to do? And no, you can't do anything. We're the county attorneys.
So I guess my other question would be, and I see Jason, I want to share, nothing would change if they accepted those. If we did this, maybe we do one a year or two a year and budget for it and get them done and start passing them over. And that way they can accept them and consume them as well. Maybe we don't do it all at one time.
I mean, the way we could do it also would be by interlocal. If we're not going to do it by conveyance, would just be, we agree that you're going to take control and.
Now you're getting somewhere. I don't want to spend $100,000 on survey of a road that's been there for 200 years.
I mean, we could just do it by interlocal and give them control. But the problem is you then you still have title, right?
But to finish my question, but nothing changes like for any of the businesses or residents that live in the city as far as 911 addressing anything? Because they already have a city address and things.
Yeah, nothing changed.
I got you. Okay. Got you.
So the question is, do we have consensus or what's the consensus of the board to send the letter to the city that the county is willing to either give or do in our local agreement? Start with given?
We just start with give and let's see if there's any interest. And then we can try to work out.
I mean, they may want some of those roads. It may be us board that's been holding up some of their projects because they don't own the road. And they're saying, yeah, we want that road because we got big plans, but we need that road. Okay, you can have it.
Well, and honestly, Mr. Chairman, it may, it may prove their point when they're applying for these grants, that there's an infrastructure need here, you know, having more of these.
So are you good with the letter going? Commissioner Hale, Commissioner White?
I'm good, sir.
I'm good with it. Mobley, Perkins are all the way down the line.
That would require a board action because it has authorization to make a gift.
Motion to.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hancock is.
No, sorry. You don't have a big problem. All those property owners along there, when they sell their house or want to sell their property, they're going to have to do a survey. You don't know what is yours and what's not. And I think the attorney will tell you, you might be opening up a can of worms.
I don't think so. They've been, well, let me ask you this. What have they been doing for the last 100 years, buying and selling their houses?
It only kicks in if somebody wants to sell their property. They're going to have to have it surveyed. Somebody's going to have to do a title search. And you're going to end up, and they think that they own county property. Are you going to give them the county property? If there's an issue?
I don't think, I don't think.
Okay, that's fine.
They've been doing it already.
I just tried to get you out of trouble. I think you headed in the wrong direction, the right direction, but the wrong way.
I'll take my chances on that one. I like the interlocal agreement.
Well, I'd rather give them. So can we start with that? We got, do I have a motion to approve a letter going?
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Perkins to draft a letter giving the road, offering the roads as to the city. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All opposed? Same sign? 5-0.
All right, I'll get the time.
What's on the road there, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Perkins.
Who's commission on 169th Road, off of Mitchell Road? I think it's not the.
That's a borderline between me and, ain't 169?
It is between me and you.
Borderline between me and Hale. Depends on what.
Man, I come through that day, through that day down there, man. And I come on that road, man.
You want to help us get food?
I mean, I.
Welcome to county roads, bro.
But every day I bounce out the bed of my truck.
Yeah.
That ain't smooth compared to all my roads.
Drive 349 or Allison Road.
No, what I'm saying is, there needs to be, you bump, you need to put a sign.
What section was that on?
It's like by the church, about 169, by many ways down there, you know, coming from Newbin Road, 136, over to Mitchell Road.
Oh, to the north. That's going to be Hale. Hale, that's your road.
All around that area.
North of Newbin.
Try to ride that road on there and go about 45 on there.
Is that a motion to have it?
No.
No, that's a motion to put a sign up there.
Need to put a sign up there that says bump somewhere. Why don't you and Mr. Hale to go for a ride tomorrow afternoon? Show them where that bump's at.
And the road?
Absolutely not.
And the road?
I can't go.
Take.
We'll take Furry with you. Okay. Hey, let's move along. Item 16, additional agenda items. Anything? Item 17, interim administrators' comments and information.
Just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. First, just wanted to say thank you to the board for, and the public and staff for coming out for Mr. Scott's retirement last week or last week, two weeks ago. I thought it was a great event. I appreciate you guys making that part of your day. I did want to thank, we didn't before, but staff put that together. Amanda from Parks, Mandy, Carissa, Christina from the library, Jennifer Payne, Michelle from Extension, Dennis Nixon, Eddie in our office, and former employee Donna Serrano came out of retirement to help the group put that together. But just wanted to thank them and thank you guys for being part of that. He enjoyed that. It was a special event for him and his family. Just a couple other things, and I'll try to be quick. I know we're wrapping up. Evergreen update, the paying class plan, where we took your challenge from the budget workshops. We're meeting with departments and this week going through the bring to minimum that you guys were looking at and finding those savings within each budget. So, so far, so good. We met with two today and they're able to do that within their, within their budgets. So we'll continue to work on that and bring you back an update, hopefully, maybe the end of the month. If not, it'll be in November with a full plan and a recommendation for you guys to finally and formally adopt and maybe talk about some of the compression and the money you set aside out of contingency. So we're working on that. The, we are meeting the LTR plan, FEMA, the Long Term Recovery. We've been meeting with that committee to talk about projects in the county that potentially for future funding, hopefully, there'll be some funds there from the state at some point. We had a community meeting Saturday. I think a couple of folks in the audience were there. And then we will have another one, November 15, community meeting for public input. So just wanted to mention that. Springs update, I don't want to steal Mr. Rosner's thunder, but I don't know if we updated you. We were approved for like $385,000 or $87,000 from the Water Management District to help with the restabilization of the bank at Little River Springs. You know, the storms and then the flooding that, I guess, I don't know if it's west or east, but that other bank that hasn't been improved, we lost a lot of that. So they're going to fund a good portion of that. We still maybe get some money from FEMA, but that'll be a project that Alden and them will be working on. So that's a big chunk of money from the district. So we're happy about that. Still working on then with Swanee Springs. I gave a draft agreement to the attorney to look at us managing Swanee Springs and what that looks like. So we'll, we'll bring that to the board at some point as well. Legislative priorities, just, I think we're tentative. I don't know if it's been confirmed, but in November will be our Legislative Affairs Day with the Senator and the Representative to come for public comment. But just in general, they started committee weeks, committee meetings this week. And so we'll be talking with our lobbyists. If you guys have priorities, projects, thoughts, ideas, please share them with staff so that we can put together our agenda for our legislative, you know, discussions with the legislator over there this year. FEMA update. Ms. Brenda couldn't be here tonight. She was, she's not feeling well. But we were, we were reimbursed. Sorry, I'm going to try to read this. She did get notice from FEMA. We got $1,072,000, which is what we asked for. It's a full reimbursement, 100%. Half of that was, $513,000 was for debris cleanup through Public Works. The other half was what they call emergency protective measures, which was wages and equipment, anything that was involved in the Emergency Operations Center. So fire rescue, admin, any other department that was in the EOC. We talked about the funds. I think Mr. Clever made reference to it, the overtime for the exempt employees. But all that was reimbursed 100% by the state. So no worries on the wages or on the equipment that was purchased. And then I think lastly, I was just going to mention. And then I think lastly, I was just going to mention, I know it's a hot topic on, of the chairman, but next month, the chairmanship will be over. And so we'll be looking for a, a new election to take place. However you guys choose to do that, I know some counties rotated around every year and everybody gets a chance at that opportunity and fun. So that's an idea. Or you can have your standard election as you usually do. But just wanted to mention that, that will be coming up, so.
Well, if you start with a rotation, obviously, clearly, you'd start with one. Right? So.
It makes sense to me, Mr. Chairman.
Either he takes it or we do.
Motion to adjourn.
And then two.
If you're the chairman, you can control that.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Furry.
That was all I had, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins.
Mr. Furry, uh, just remember, I've seen some stops out there at the Douglas Center. What are those stops for, you know?
I hadn't seen them. I don't know.
You haven't seen them?
Mm-mm.
Alden, survey stakes, stops at the Douglas Center? What's that about?
Ms. Henderson?
Probably, I'll just go out on a limb, it's probably for the Cultural Center. I know they've been talking to Water Management about, you know, that'll be in that grassy area behind the flagpole in that parking area. So it's probably related to, to some of the survey work that they're probably getting together for that.
Okay. That's where he is?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Oh, yeah. Ms. Lisa, we could have called her up to speak. She loves to speak.
I told her to give one. I told her we needed an engineer's update. She threatened me with my line.
And I'll just, if I can, I'll update you on the HVAC for the Douglas Gym.
Thank you.
That's a separate project, but we are, Holland's putting that solicitation together, and so that'll be going out to bid probably this week or next. And so we'll, we will get started on that and hire a contractor.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Anything else for Mr. Furry? Thank you, Mr. Furry. Closing comments? Who, who went first last time? We'll start with Mobley. Let's go this way. Mobley.
I appreciate.
You always say a lot, so I'll let you go.
Appreciate the staff. Been with, shout out to the public works. They started on Central Road, resurfacing it. So appreciate that and appreciate everybody killing.
Commissioner Perkins.
Uh, Ms. Henderson did a, I think Mr. Furry said something about that, but I went out on Saturday to a little event there, I think Ms. Heather Henderson had set up out there and might have been with, at X2. And it was very informative. They had a community involved, uh, meeting there with FEMA and those that was in there. And it was, it was talking questions and a lot of people from the community came up and they had a discussion, and it was very, very great. A lot of things that they put on, on notes, and I guess they'll be coming out pretty soon, Ms. Henderson, we have someone, we did a great job, I enjoyed that. So just thanks to everyone. Thank you for all of our hard workers out there that's keeping this, this county clean and, and doing the hard work they're doing. We do appreciate it. And we thank Mr. Furry doing a good job of what he's doing, and we appreciate it. And these ladies, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Commissioner Perkins. Commissioner White, walk from inside out.
Go ahead.